All right. Look alert your life. Hello. Mark, can you sign in, please? We're up.
Thanks for joining us, everybody. I'm Kim Gilger. I'm from St. Lawrence County IDA. I'm going to read the advertised legal notice of this public hearing. The advice of the public hearing today is being held pursuant to Article 18 A of New York through the general municipal law by St. Lawrence County Industrial Development Agency, hereafter referred to as St. Lawrence SLC IDA. Casino Burke New York LLC, a New York limited liability company having offices at 305 West Commercial, Springfield, Missouri, has submitted an application to the IDA requesting that the agency provide financial assistance to the applicant, affiliate entity, with respect to the project. Corey Potstan LLC was born, an affiliate of the applicant, for the purpose of undertaking a certain project consisting of: A. The acquisition of a leasehold interest in approximately 3.3 acres of land located at 41 Elm Street, the village of Potstan, Town of Potstan, St. Lawrence County, State of New York, or Clarkson University, together with a three-story building containing approximately 88,572 square feet, also known as Old Snell Hall, collectively now called the existing improvements; B. The renovation, equipping, and modernization of the existing improvements, including, but not limited to: construction of 58 affordable housing units and one superintendent unit; fitness room, community room with communal kitchen, library area, indoor bike storage, laundry facility, office space, art studio, gallery and exhibition hall; improvements and upgrades to mechanical, life safety, and energy systems; accessibility, facade, and amenities, and related improvements; C. The acquisition and installation in and around the improvements of certain items of machinery, equipment, fixtures, furniture, and other incidental tangible personal property, collectively the equipment, and together with the land, the existing improvements, and the improvements by the way of the facility. The company will own a leasehold interest in the facility from Clarkson University through a long-term lease. The IDA will acquire an interest in the facility, and the financial assistance contemplated by the IDA will consist generally of the exemption from taxation expected to be claimed by the company as a result of the IDA taking an interest in possession or control by lease, license, or otherwise of the facility, or of the company acting as the agent of the IDA, consisting of exemption from state and local sales and use tax with respect to the construction and renovation of the facility; two, exemption from mortgage recording tax with respect to any qualifying mortgage on the facility; and three, exemption from general real property taxation with respect to the facility, which exemptions shall be offset in whole or in part by contractual payments in lieu of taxes, the pilot, by the company for the benefit of the effective taxing jurisdictions. With me today, we have a copy of the company's application, including the cost-benefit analysis available for you. As a representative of the IDA, I will hear and accept written and oral comments from all persons who view in favor or opposed to the development to the proposed financial assistance. Written statements provided to the IDA regarding this project will become part of the public record. The floor is now open to make comments, and I'd like to introduce Rob from Casino, and he's going to make a few statements.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Rob Holtzman, with Casino Group. What we do today is have Catherine Madden. She's also with Casino Group, and she'll be acting as the project manager for this project. We're here today to, our joining our office, we're with Catherine, and I work out of, I gave up this morning to share a little bit of input for this project. We're here this morning to request the IDA's support for the pilot agreement for the core transformative mixed-use development that will deliver quality housing, business resources, and cultural amenities to Potstan. The project's purpose will renew an underutilized building prominently located at the old city. A little bit about who we are at Casino. Many of our projects take on large complex sites that often, and very often stimulate the reinvestment surrounding projects. As a mission-driven company, the Casino Group strives for a better world with one development at one time. We believe in the power of paper, and in fact, the name Casino actually means, it means neighborhoods expansion. So what does this look like in some of the work and accomplishments? Block 22, it's very nice. There we began, and we had what began as one building, a 130-year-old building at risk becoming a parking lot, became the rebirth of four historic buildings, working with the city and the local university, creating 98 units of housing, an innovation and business development center, co-working in maker space areas, and new Greek-style restaurants on Main Street. To spur further development and hiring non-professionals to work downtown, this project has transformed the core of the state's talent into the city. A little closer to home, Liverstone, in the Myra River. This one recently opened in the fall of Block 2019. Beginning as Jones quarter 1950s, about 20 times the former housing development was wiped in effect. The building was largely boarded up, significantly dilapidated, the dilapidated building that attracted illicit activities in the middle of historic Myra River. With the help of New York State Homes Community, and our supportive services partner, the Economic Opportunity Program, this site was recently reopened in the fall of 2019, and delivered housing and affordable housing development that also supports families at risk of losing housing, and veterans experiencing homelessness. In addition to 91 units of housing, it contains a barber shop, dentist office, workout room, stellar units, a preschool classroom, a playground, and a playground. Last year, Liverstone was recognized as one of 10 developments selected in 2019 New York State Historic Preservation Project. So here at Potstan, let's look, here we go. The name is actually inspired by Thomas S. Clarkson, a founding member of Potstan. As part of a local board, he supplied the stump for many of the various destruction activities, but he also had a heart of mine. He traveled across civil war housing, created the first public sewer system in the area, founded Potstan Public Library, and teaching local workers how to weave. He even offered tuition for preschool. Thomas S. Clarkson gave away work, not charity, and many projects with public that came by giving people needs, dignity, and critical skills to their children. These values align with who we are in this world. The glory unholds these ideas by providing a healthy foundation for the community. What does the project do for Potstan and the North Country? It rescues a historic building, an underutilized resource that is the heart of the town. It creates 58 units of affordable housing, so many good for us, and we rely on it on its own people, like firefighters, schoolteachers, police officers, nurses. Then these people will help to find, shoot, protect the North Country. It propels commerce, local business and entrepreneurship, the shipwreck center, which will offer classrooms, conference spaces, and training areas. It inspires the North Country's creativity, public energy, the rebirth of the air-provoked dance, the African-American music. It employs local contractors and North Country workers upwards of 40% of our overall workforce during construction, plus generates more than $100,000 in tax revenue from the rest to pay. And since the property currently isn't on the tax rolls, this will add to the tax base you're taxing your residents. The Casino Group believes in the littlest, uh, this people, our tree of homes, of resource and commerce, and that we are to bring positive impact to the community, particularly in the heart of it. So in closing, I ask for your support of the pilot. Thank you, Al. We'll be sure to throw it through the act.
Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I'm curious about the values.
Can you tell us your name, please? Allison Ford.
Yeah, so I'm curious to whether or not it kind of goes worse for a quote that it would be fast without air. Well, if you talk about amenities, we've talked about bringing different elements into a housing project, affordable housing project, like social, country, swashing. And then on the same, I'm saying, it's a problem. You're talking about bringing amenities that don't need to be taxed, um, that really aren't taxed, but it rests on our tax. It is, it is from the tax. It all sounds a lot like, I think.
Back to, I did that, one of the things that the approach for examples, we're talking about, we're working out, Starbucks. When the worst is done, it's good. On the developers, the IDA are probably the most experienced in the state. Um, you're writing, uh, an answer from the state. So that is, um, as a fifth or a tax award. They like, they're part of the, so they're part of the, what, the, part of the, but that was considered as part of the, is part of the, part of the.
So another one would just be, I like, in therapy, it's not me, it's not, it's not part of that.
So my name is, I'm a, um, I'm a property owner in the village. It's an eight difficult period of pilot. I've never, uh, there was, I don't know, 32 years in life without a threat. Um, certainly a lot of times, I share that with you, yes. Why is it because this will not fall through the belt? Yes, I've just been heard, um, yeah, it kind of, it just seemed to apply a very kind of a difficult person, and I was why, and if this, this project would be a going concern after a kind of, that, you know, why would we have, you know, that, that, that?
Yeah. I would, but it's present by, yeah, um, by, um, many pilots, uh, stay, yeah, about five, five thousand, trying to solve, um, some of the, what's going to be.
What's the longest one you have ever heard?
Longest one I've heard.
If the developer is more, first, they're, um, considering that, has, has been a fantastic balance, but we didn't place. Yeah, it's like, it's what it matters, and the amount is just the greatest of all, but.
Well, I guess some of the, well, first of all, just myself, for the fact that I thought it would be a month, seven, eight, or something like that, so it's surprising. Um, I've only thought one part more, spoke of what the feeling was, was you'd be having this sort of building, it would be, um, great advantage to, you know, downtown, but right now, it's locked down, it's falling apart, and if there was a way, move this back to the light, it would, it would be triple down.
So it's still, all right, yeah.
Well, you know.
It's a slow, very slow, that's not, why is it, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, let me, it's like now, and I don't know, it's, 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 it's breaking. Um, so that's the third, Potstan, um, because I don't know, the ceiling is much too fat, and the function of the block, so, um, because, as we all know, Potstan is running, the, the tax, the taxes, and, you know, it seems like there are those situations. I did, the other argument they made was that you can zero tax now, it's March 1st. So you're going from zero to some money, I mean, re-mat, and then you find something higher. So definitely part of the, of the.
In Manango, it was up there, too, the cost-benefit analysis, there is a detailed section that somewhat describes the pilot structure and stuff, um, that would be, um, good pages that, that is developed by the IDA based on a project.
So I do have some clarification, I can offer it to you in a two-year term. Two years is worth construction period, and we have a two-year term, it's really stable, it's worth for this project, so it's very close to two years, that's what I mean, two years. And it has a lot to do with lenders, too, for them to support this project, so.
First, I have the director of planning, we call him, to go in Potstan and provide a letter to Mr. State, who's the IDA's president. And asked to summarize the village's support for the core project. So, by the start, I wish to express the village of Potstan's support for the core LLC, this proposed core project, building in Snell Hall. Old Snell Hall, formerly, a building located in Clarkson versus downtown campus, is a largely vacant and underutilized structure. It is slowly deteriorating, as a source of light, the village's historic downtown, in their case, residential, of course. Corey Potstan LLC, closest one to being that that used the building to create a next of residential, commercial, and service spaces. The village is supportive of the project in its application or in pilot agreement with the St. Lawrence County Industrial Development Agency, but finally, as it stands, Old Snell Hall, owned by Clarkson versus, is exempt from a property taxation. This means that while taxing jurisdictions, including the village receives on tax revenue from municipal services, each provides. The proposed pilot agreement will generate new revenue for certain taxing jurisdictions that help offset these expenses. It should denote it for the record in each local taxing jurisdiction, posted presentations by Corey Potstan LLC in August. It included significant time to the negotiation and post-pond agreement, and it provided opportunities for respect for this report. The proposed project would create 58 affordable housing units. U.S. Department of Housing and Development estimates that 61, only 2% of the village's population, a annual income below 80% of county state council revenue, which is a threshold for large building improvement, general housing programs, and industrial programs as well. Additionally, the American Community Survey, which is part of this house, found that 37% of the village's population, a income below the federal limit, potstands community, would lead for affordable workforce aspirations. Old Snell Hall is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It contributes to the village's historic character and reeminence as a center for higher education in the state. Part of the first, personally, it's all rest of Potstan, the role of, 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 of the city. The economic benefit of 58 housing units downtown presents business opportunities for area merchants, particularly in the Old Snell Hall located downtown. Downtown remains our community's center of civic and commercial life, features grocery stores, health services, bakeries, coffee roasteries, 15 group service establishments, offering a wide variety of dining options. The adaptive use of Old Snell Hall, in addition to eliminating substantial source of light, made use of historic concert theater, which will help pursue Potstan's experience. The theater has been closed, due to public for many years, given the condition, returning it to service for period of 2019, then moving from destination, residents, and visitors to downtown Potstan. The proposed project will support Potstan's downtown private decision mission by eliminating the source of slums and supply conditions at a high profile location in downtown. Finally, at its meeting on January 20, 2020, village board trustees, joined with Tom Potstan, Potstan Central School District, resolved to approve the second agreement of prioritizing industrial development agencies, to enter into a pilot agreement with Corey Potstan LLC. I would ask if you could, in a minute, since the village board, the, 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 the added, the initial, uh, uh, the gap, the village, I think, for your attention, the version of industrial development agency's board, to support the proposed pilot agreement with Corey Potstan LLC.
It's likely a little lengthy, I cut it down to about 30 minutes.
Your name?
I'm gonna read it.
Your, your name, correct? Okay.
Good morning, be lots of residents, where, rental property owners, and Potstan. First of all, I'd like to express my disappointment with this, or the IDA has shown the taxing stakeholders by holding this public hearing until Wednesday morning, 11:00 AM, where a few individuals contend. I know a few rental property owners not offended because they cannot do big jobs. One individual layman, why get a sorry, a potential, by the fact that it's slummed well in order to get passed, it seems they may have been right. In the Sunday, January 26th, North Country now, an article titled, "Potstan Votes to Propose Change in County Tax Assistance." The state faced a massive budget deficit in county legislation, where state lawmakers are looking to balance the budget on the backs of local government, unfunded mandates to the county, not mentioned here, the state facing 6.1 billion investment, looming largely that taxpayers won't be putting in the effort. This is somewhat analogous to what violent organizations, such as Clarkson University, the Casino Group, who seems to seek out communities for free, i.e. pilots and concerts, the St. Lawrence County IDA, Potstan Central School Board, Town of Potstan, and Village Potstan are committed to local rental property owners, to put businesses in rent, by improving a non-stereant pilot for the core project, and seeing how an outside corporation with their products in Potstan, proposing to remodel and administer management, for the parts of Snell by complimenting 79 partners, the theater, and another business incubator of the core, the village play recent state. Obsessed me when I walked by this building, it was falling apart, it needs save. While I am in agreement with him, it seems Clarkson has neglected this complex for many years. However, they were successful in purchasing and acquiring upon the dealership of the property on the patch road, for approximately $1 million while inflecting this Snell complex. Had this been any other property, it would have been a life for property left. This is a personal conundrum for myself, because I think this building is very amazing, and we love to see it revived and utilized for private enterprise, adding to our taxable revenue. Under the example of, in fact, I own my property, the Potstan, the, 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 this extended plan is evidently a non-standard agreement or a pilot, a standard agreement, according to county IDA CEO Patrick Kelly, calls for a ten-year pilot payment plan usually on behalf of an industrial developer. I have a few questions and comments, I think some of them may have been expressed in a stellar, quite, spirit. Why a non-stereant pilot? Has anyone else received a non-stereant pilot in the past? How many local rental properties owners in the village of Town of Potstan were queried by their local representative as to how this might affect them? Other than, other than this weekday morning venue, was there any other public hearings held that would take into consideration public, uh, affect stakeholders, other than the ones as pilot benefit? If not, why not? And this is, and this is in fact illegal. Is there any documented evidence you could cite suggesting this category of housing is needed in Potstan? The core project brochures state St. Lawrence County Arts Council will be housed in this complex. There is also a rumor this organization is acquiring a new building in the village of Potstan, another property off the patch road. Note includes a factual agreement, which isn't. Does anyone pushing this pilot have a clue? If not, is the core project predicated on the St. Lawrence County Arts Council moving in and leasing permanent? If so, who now will be replacing the St. Lawrence County Arts Council as a tenant to occupy and be rent in this place? Can someone please elaborate? Concerning the St. Lawrence County Arts Council, if the St. Lawrence County Arts is moving in complex, why was the city Potstan Village Trustee, who is also the St. Lawrence County Arts Council Director, prepared to vote on a resolution to support the pilot? That seems to be a blatant conflict of interest and should be addressed. The plan states there will be a 500-seat theater in this complex. Currently, there are four apparently large colleges within a 10-mile radius, and a green school and music. Recently, completed a recording arts center that harbors numerous artists and fans. In addition, there are numerous high school auditoriums, the whole place, theaters, concerts. Can someone explain to me why, when we are, we are $6.1 billion in debt, and Potstan is one of the most financially stressed villages in the state, why we need another theater in the village of Potstan? Most troubling is this quote. The Chino has stated publicly, the Chino's group's plan for purpose of Old Snell and apartments opposite, and performance space would not be viable without the pilot program arrangement. I say this project should be able to sell itself, period, not on the backs of taxpayer. What they seem to be saying is, if we cannot use taxpayer funding, this is not a viable enterprise, and the Chino would not even be here. However, because it has, like, tax players, we distribute wealth, using the tax, utilizing tax benefits, grants, et cetera, federal, state, local, and a non-stereant pilot, plus seeing they have little skin in the game, they will do it, they need ample people to pay for it, and there are so other way. It's not see why rental properties of the Potstan area will have to compete for revenue in the rental market, while the Chino group will be utilizing, we have to push our tax money, complete, compete in the rep, Potstan rental property, around while we all fight painful taxes. In ending, myself and many others in the village of Potstan love to see this building Clarkson has neglected for so many years, brought back collecting, but why shouldn't we enforce the state like that? We can fund our, our, our money down, more, at least, or like the officials could do, squeeze a bit more out of the Chino group benefit on Potstan. Anybody want to add anything to that?
Well, you have a lot of multiple questions in there, so let me, um.
There's a lot of questions.
Okay. There have been at least six other public meetings held where public was welcome to go and voice their opinions, starting from last August through the past couple of weeks. So as far as the timing of this meeting, historically, this is just the time we've held public hearings, or has been ample opportunity for the public to, to make their presence at a different venue. In our opinion, that's what we had.
In your opinion?
That's what we had.
In your opinion?
The 32-year pilot, I think we spoke to that a few minutes ago, it was to correspond with other financing to make the project a viable option. As far as, um, your, your questions on Clarkson University, I'm sorry, I could not answer for them, or, or to their actions. Like I said, you have a lot of questions, but if there's any other, a couple others specifically you'd like to read?
So is the St. Lawrence County Arts Council moving into that complex?
I, yeah.
Is it predicated upon, is their project predicated upon them moving into the complex?
No.
That's a rather police.
An existing.
So who will be taking up that, is there anybody?
Um, ground floor, ground floor, you, respect.
That will break. So, so, I, I don't know, um, to answer your question.
So technically, of course, you should have a pilot as well, because if they're literally gonna not just give this $1 lease, they're going to use money on the theater, there should be a, 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 a pilot, and, and.
should be a Pacino pilot and a Potstown pilot.
We'll make note of your concern to bring it to the board on Friday.
May I ask this, please?
Absolutely.
Thanks, my name is, so, thanks for your, um, I have questions, several officials know by the IDA was going to be representing, also the developer group, you know, in the county. Three of the taxing authorities currently involved, village, town, and Potstown, and the Potstown Central School District, were to be represented by a lot of firms, chosen and paid for by the developer. The situation was unprecedented, and I was simply told that that's probably what they were going to do, this kind of. While the county does give funding to the IDA, the IDA is not part of the county government and should not be representing both the tax entities and the developer. But this is not the primary issue I have in mind. My main concern is that one taxing authority is being completely left out of this proposal. That entity is the Potstown Library District. The taxes this district currently raises are $574,000 per year. This district covers the same area, the school district, affects the same taxpayers, and it cannot have a star receiving star tax exemption applied to one's assessed value. For the past several years, the library has normalized their practices, continuing the 2% tax, and asks for that amount through your budget vote, regardless of the. In 32 years, a 2% increase to this district will result in a $1 million tax levy. The library, as a taxing authority, was also exempt in terms of this pilot and must be calculated into this payment. If the IDA and developer stay with the same yearly monetary amount, every entity will receive plus due to the library getting a tug. If you convince taxpayers that the library district is somehow exempt from this pilot, it means the CIO will be paying nothing to the library, no taxation and no penalty. This scenario will cause the taxpayers to subsidize the sound of state funding for 12 years. Several other pilots should also be updated, because the library is exempt from that, is a discussion for another day. This current pilot agreement needs to be updated, and all five taxing authorities should be listed in one contract. Each authority should know how much they are receiving every year, should demand and clause such as states that they may review and ultimately agree not if they wish every 10 years. Each board must be open on, as usual. Most of us will be elderly or dead by the end of this 32-year contract, so please do it right for us, guys, and say, say thank you.
You, either of you have written statements that you'd like us to incorporate, we'll have to do that, otherwise we'll take our transcription of what you said, but that isn't it. Any other comments?
So we addressing any of these comments, or comments, questions prior to Friday's vote to pass this?
Everything will be brought to the board for their review prior to the vote. And it will be discussed at the, the open meeting, which is Friday, at the IDA offices in Denver. Anybody is welcome to attend.
Some of these are out of town.
Anything else, anyone?
I'm just meeting Friday.
Hi.
Very, very.
Okay, if there's no further comments, the public hearing is now booked. Thank you.